Good evening and welcome to Monday Night, January the 2nd. And this, our invocation will be provided by Stephanie Ballantyne, Assistant, Stephen Ballantyne, excuse me. Assistant Pastor, Stephen, please forgive me. Assistant Pastor for Mount Zion Restoration Branch Church. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most kind and eternal heavenly Father, we gather this night, oh heavenly Father, to begin a new year. We ask heavenly Father for your direction, your guidance, and your protection through this proceeding. Lord, the needs of our city are great. And I know heavenly Father that this council that has been elected to run this city, our desire, have a desire, Lord, to do thy will. Be with them, Lord, this night, be with our mayor, our city manager, and the department heads here in this room. Touch us, Lord, is my prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Fears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' requests. We have some citizens' requests from beyond the city limits. Can I have a motion to suspend the rules, please?
So moved.
We have a motion to suspend the rules to allow non-residents to speak. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to allow non-residents to speak. Any discussion on the motion? See none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Thank you. First up for citizens' requests is Chad McGregor. Chad, please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. Chad McGregor, 1100 Admiral Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri. Former city employee, currently work as a business representative with IBW Local 53. As you know, we represent about 300 employees here in the city. Year after year, we hear that the city is broke, money's tight in every department. We heard in this very room that if we don't fix it, then the city would be bankrupt in three to five years. Yet, here we are again. Tonight, you're being asked to borrow $20 million the city does not have to spend, all relying on the citizens to pay for the rest of the puzzle through a general obligation bond. I will not deny that the PD building needs to be replaced, as I represent over a dozen employees that work under that roof, and I have seen some of the rough conditions firsthand. However, if the geo-bond does not come to fruition roughly 15 months down the road, there will be a scramble once again to cut back on basic city services, as we've seen multiple times in recent history on benefits that have been promised to employees throughout their careers. I've spoken to a few members in the community about this building, and when last occupied, it had many issues I was told about, including some major leaks, and the issues where they said were patched up for a potential sale. I'm just curious as to what else has been patched up on the, on the building that caused it to continue to sit vacant. It's very hard to understand why you refuse to spend $80 million on generation in the recent past that was thoroughly researched by the city staff and outside experts for many months that would have produced income for the city, yet you're seriously looking at spending $20 million on a need that will ultimately come down to asking the citizens of Independence to pay for the remaining 90-plus percent of the puzzle. It's my hope that you will put some more time and thought into this and vote no tonight on Resolution 23-121, until the remainder of the puzzle has been put into motion, or at the very least postpone this item indefinitely, so that you can get a better grasp of where the community stands on being taxed with an additional $250 million in debt of a potential geo-bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Sorenson, and Bob, can you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Bob Sorenson. I live at 800 Southwest Powell Drive, Oak Grove, Missouri. I am the president of the Employees' Lager Retirement Group, which has more, represent over more than 1,200 people. I am here to address Ordinance 23-121. I have heard the word transparency used many times by the current city manager, mayor, and council. There has been no transparency in regards to this ordinance, a meeting with the chamber that I doubt very few people knew about, executive sessions of the mayor and council, which are closed meetings, a study session that was only about a geo-bond for April of 2025, a December 18th council meeting where this item was hidden on the cover sheet of the agenda, emergency study session on the 27th of December that few of any citizens knew about and was totally one-sided, and then today's council meeting. What is being proposed by the city in this ordinance is to take on a debt of over $40 million without a vote of the people of the city, also to, also to take on this debt with no funding source to pay for it. Yes, $40 million. This is, that is a 20-year, $20 million loan at $1.6 million payments a year for 20 years. That would equal $32 million, plus the money owed to IPL for the property on 23rd Street to move the police station there, which I would estimate to be over $8 million, if not a lot more. At no meeting that I have attended has a revenue source been identified to pay for this debt at this time. When looking at the city charter, it speaks of bond issues that can be placed on a ballot to be approved by voters for the city to take on a debt. It provided, it provided a revenue source to pay back the debt. This, I believe, would be an appropriate method to address this issue. I am sure you are all aware of the following city taxes: police, fire, streets, parks, and stormwater. These taxes were approved by voters for a specific purpose on a ballot. Taxes, as well as debts, should be approved by the voters, with each of you who are elected to represent. I can give you an example across the street where a bond was approved by voters to build the current police station. Now let me give you a list of expenditures made by the city without voters' approval that did not go so well. The building we are standing in today, I think we are all familiar with what happened on that, the city hall, the Bass Pro Tiff, IPL funds to purchase the old MCI Hospital Complex, Rockwood Country Club, the old, tearing down the old power station, and the money that was borrowed from the water department to build the farmer's market building. All of these expenditures had an impact on the city's budget and the utilities' budgets. This in turn affects the taxpayers, the ratepayers, business owners, current employees, and retirees. I am not saying that the issues that you are trying to address, the police building and city hall, are not important, because they are. I do not think they are quite the emergency that you are making them out to be. I know there are issues with both, but these issues did not just happen, they've been happening for years, and they even happened, the police building issues were happening long before I even retired in 2009. I also know that you have the ability to have anything you want placed on the April ballot, the upcoming April ballot, as long as it's done by the 23rd of January. I believe from listening to all of you that you all are in favor of the geo-bond. I believe that this would be the right way to move forward. I watched the city manager's presentation at the study session and what the bond money would be used for. It is the city's responsibility to present this to the citizens and ask for their support. It also gives everyone impacted a chance to be heard. That is transparency, excuse me, and what I believe as elected officials should want. As the old saying goes, "Let's not put the cart before the horse." The funding should come before the spending.
You have one minute, sir.
To conclude, I know you are all aware that I attend every council meeting and study session. I sit, and I watch, and I listen. I have sat there and watched the presentations by the city manager every June for the past five years. I hear him say how broke the city is, and if we continue in the direction we are going, we could be bankrupt in a few years. If I am to believe that is true, then how am I supposed to believe that you can take on a debt without designated funding to take care of it? That being said, I believe your vote on this ordinance tonight will include, will indicate the true financial status of the city. I ask all of you to vote no on this ordinance. If there is a, if, if, if there is a taxpayer's money that will be, if there is a deposit that's been made that will, there will be, that will be lost, so be it. Put this to a vote of the people as a bond issue so that their voice can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Please, please maintain order. Thank you.
Janet Conroe, 18821 East 25th Terrace, South Independence, Missouri. At this point, I will say I am not either for or against the overall proposal that has been presented to the citizens. My objection is, is to the way it is being done. It, I just feel like you're not being fair to the overall citizens of Independence. By doing the lease purchase, you're taking away the, the voice of the people. The bond council explained that very well when that representative, when he got up here, and he said that per the charter, if you purchase a building, it has to be voted on by the citizens, but if you lease it, then the council has the say on that. That is what I object to. I don't think that you're giving the citizens the rights that they really have. I think you're just trying to push it through without really listening to all the people of Independence. I don't, I don't think that it is fair for the majority of the citizens of Independence. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next is Jamie Franklin. Can Jamie please state your name and address, please?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jamie Franklin, 18700 East 28th Terrace, Independence. I'm here to comment on the proposed Gihaw building purchase, which I am opposed to. As a retired employee of Power and Light, I have concerns about how the purchase will affect the finances of Power and Light, Water Department, and Water Pollution Control. I believe that the annual payments for all will go up with the move to the new building. Last week's study session, presentation showed Power and Light's annual cost going down by $138,840 by moving to the Gihaw building. It also shows that the water and water pollution are currently paying a total of $237,962 for their space in the IUC, with those costs also going up in the move. The current amount is paid to Power and Light, and I assume it will cease with the move to the Gihaw building. With adding in this loss of rental revenue, Power and Light's cost would go up almost $100,000 annually. According to the PUAB June 23 financial report, Power and Light received an annual rental income of $302,000. With the loss of that amount, Power and Light's annual cost would increase by $163,000. The purchase amount for the IUC building will be determined, and if that amount is not enough to pay off the bonds or make the bond payment, who would be responsible for those? Would it be general fund responsibility or remain with Power and Light? If three utilities are not renting but purchasing their share of the Gihaw building, their annual cost will still be higher for the next 20 years, at least $2 million for Power and Light. City council and city manager will most likely be completely different in 20 years from now, and from the history I know, I would guess those payments will not, will not end. Although I've been retired for a little over two years, I was not aware of any office space shortage for the Power and Light department that would necessitate a move. While finding or constructing an adequate building for IPD is worthy and necessary goal that I fully agree with, I do not think it should be done at the expense of all three city utilities. I wish the PUAB would have had a chance to review this and give their recommendation, and I wished I had a third district council member to be involved in this decision, decision also. Thank you.
Next up is Mike Johann. Mike, please state your name and your address, please.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, councilmen and ladies. My name's Mike Johann, 2617 Stone Ridge, Independence, Missouri. Just to let you know, I've been a lifelong resident of Independence. Lived here my whole life, born, raised here, die here. I have grown children living in this city, I have grandchildren living in this city, brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, cousins, you name it. I love this city. This city has been good to me. I worked here for 40 years. So, I just have concerns about this, because I don't think it's being thought out very well. I don't think it's being, I just think this needs to be postponed till this, some more things can be thought out and dealt with before this moves forward. I just want to say, the police station, about 12, 13 years ago, the city passed these sales taxes, like the police sales tax. They spent a million dollars, $1 million to move the health department from the third floor, got them their own building. Of course, then we did away with the health department after we spent a million dollars of the police sales tax. We'd spent probably about half million to rehabilitate the third floor. I worked there. I was a detective there. There's nothing wrong with that third floor. It was just totally rehabilitated about 12, 13 years ago. Maybe there are some issues with the building, but we're, you're going to be asking people to renew these sales tax, and we wasted a million and a half dollars to move to a smaller building over at 23rd and Arty Mize. That building's smaller than the police station we have now. And I don't think you're thinking out of everything. It doesn't have a jail out there, you're going to have to keep this jail open. Every night, there's probably five or six felony cases of people being arrested, taken to jails, probably more than that now, because I retired over 10 years ago. Detectives are going to have to drive from that building over to the jail every day. Every day, they're going to have to drive there. You have safety concerns. What if there's a fight in the jail? There's no officers, officers there. Who's going to, you know, help the civilian jailers? You know, nobody's thinking this all the way through. These things need to be, you know, talked about. Talk to people that, that do the job every day, because like I said, detectives are going to have to drive over there every day. You get a major investigation, I believe me, I worked on over 100 homicides. You get a big homicide investigation going, all of us detectives were there at the police station, pulling people out of jails, doing, you know, out of jail cells, talking to them, doing their thing, and they're going to have to drive from another building just to get over there and try to keep this investigation going. To me, you know, you're, you're going to ask in the future to renew these sales tax on the police, fire, parks, other departments, and we're going to be renting space to them at this new building. Is that where our sales tax is going, to pay rent, when it's supposed to be used for these departments? And, and you, you're losing the public's trust by doing this, because, like I said, we're wasting a million and a half dollars, and you're going to have to rent space to these departments. I just, I just don't think, I just don't think we should be in a rush for this to, I think you're losing the public's trust, is what I, I think you're doing. I think this needs to slow down and get thought out a little bit better. Like I said, you're going to be asking people to renew these sales taxes, and I don't know, I think a lot of people may be hesitant to renew them with what you're doing here by trying to rush this through, of course, at Christmas time and New Years, when people are busy and hustle-bustle life.
You have one minute, sir.
And this, this was like going under the radar. And obviously, there's a lot of people that have found out about this, and, and we're just asking you to slow down and think about it, and make sure that this is the right thing to do. Make sure you have the right way to, to pay this back, because like, like other speakers have said, where's the revenue source to pay this 1.6 million? That's my concern. That's one of my biggest concerns. Where's the 1.6 million dollars coming from for the next 20 years? I know what it's like. We got saddled with the Bass Pro Tiff, and we've been paying for that ever since. That's really saddled the city. I don't want this to saddle the city, because it's going to affect me as a resident and all my family and, and all the other citizens in this city. It's going to affect them, it's going to affect all employees, too, because I remember for years, you know, we, we don't have money for raises, we don't have money for this because of the Bass Pro Tiff, and I don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Next, Stacy Howell, and please state your name and address, please.
My name is Stacy Howell. I reside at 20301 East 14th Street, Independence, Missouri, 64056. I spent my entire 60 years living in Independence, the first 22 years on the northwest side, the last 38 years on the northeast side. So I have a lot to, I have a lot invested in this city. I'd like to address the city, the mayor and the city council members of the city of Independence to support the potential purchase of the building located at 20201 East Jackson Drive. Supposedly, the city leadership has already signed a lease purchase agreement with Webster Bank for the property. The reason for this lease purchase agreement is centered around building issues with the current city hall and the current police department building. Supposedly, the current city hall is outdated with major foundation issues, and the current police department building has numerous issues which have been present for many years. If I recall correctly, within the last five years, parts of city hall were remodeled. If, if part of the building can be remodeled, why can't the remainder of the building be remodeled? If the building had major foundation issues prior to the previous remodel, why did the city perform the previous remodel work? The city of Independence also paid $397,800 to remodel this specific areas of the police department building over a 14-month period between 2020 and, and 2022. If the police department building had major issues prior to the previous remodel, why did the city perform the previous remodel work? Doesn't make sense to me. I would like to present an analogy to you. If your house requires repair that costs $20,000, but you know you will struggle to cover that cost, are you going to figure out how to cover the $20,000 repairs or purchase a new $500,000 house that you definitely cannot afford? I will bet you will choose to figure out how to cover the $20,000 repairs in your current house instead of purchasing, purchasing a new house that you definitely cannot afford. The same concept can be applied to city hall and the police department building. Fix the buildings currently owned by the city of Independence. I would like to present another analogy. Are you going to purchase a new $50,000 vehicle you do not need and cannot afford based on funds you hope to receive in the future from a Powerball ticket purchase? I suspect the answer to that question is no. If I'm correct, then please explain why you entered into a lease purchase agreement with Webster Bank for the Jackson Drive building when you do not currently have the funds to cover the lease purchase agreement? Based on the information available, the Jackson Drive building was listed for $10.5 million, so why is the city of Independence going to enter into a $20 million lease purchase agreement for the building? The building was initially remodeled in 2013 when GHA purchased it, as well as additional remodeling since 2013, so there should only be minimal changes required in the building, so why does the city have to remodel the entire building? And I know this because I've worked at that company for 38 years. If you are planning to use utility funds, IPL, water, and sewer to cover the purchase of the Jackson Drive building, please note, any XX funds in these accounts do not belong to the White Elephant Deal of the city of Independence. The purchase of the current IUC building located at 17721 East 23rd Street was a poor purchase as the city did not need the building. All the employees that have occupied the building previously had office space in other city of Independence buildings.
You have one minute, ma'am.
It is my understanding IPL's paid approximately $19 million for the IUC building remodel, which was worth much less. The city of Independence already installed a pneumatic tube system at the IUC building for customers to pay their bills for their vehicles, from their vehicles. The city of Independence leadership would like to move customer service to the E, East Jackson Drive building, which will require the installation of another pneumatic tube system to allow citizens to pay their bills from the vehicles. There is also no bus service to the building located at 20201 East Jackson Drive, which will potentially cause a hardship for the residents who cannot pay their utility bills online with a credit card or bank account. The closest best stop is at Center Point Medical Center, which is located at 19600 East 39th Street, which is 1.1 miles or an approximate 25-minute walk to 20201 East Stack Jackson Drive. The total one-way commute from the University Health Building in northeast Independence is approximately 1 hour and 18 minutes. I suspect a minimum of 50% of the residents who pay their utility bills in person live on the west side of the city.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Edward Nesbit, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Edward Nesbit, 3817 South Milton Drive. Council, you guys have heard a lot of people complain about this. I hope you're listening to them, because they're right. You guys need to think, where's this money coming from? You need to tell us where this money's coming from. So, I was going to talk about the budget, because you guys don't have anything in the budget this year for buying this building. So how do you expect your utilities people to pay their rent for this building? So the way I see it, 1.6 million dollars, we're probably going to have to let go 32 employees at $50,000 each. So can they afford to have 32 employees disappear? I don't think so. So we need to listen to what people are saying here. They've all said a lot of good stuff. So we need to really think about purchasing this building and putting it off, probably. On other points that I'll bring up, last city council meeting, you guys went against what the planning commission recommended on three different things. Did you guys even read what the planning commission recommended? One of them was a street to nowhere, and you guys approved it, because nobody said anything about it. You didn't even look at it. I'm trying to figure out why are we having planning commission meetings if you guys don't take our recommendations? The other two ones, we recommended to pass, and you guys turned it down, because probably had some people complain about it to their city council member, but they came up also, and we talked about it at the city planning commission. You guys need to listen to the planning commissions, too, maybe look at their recommendations instead of doing this consent agenda and just voting everything through without talking about it. We need to get on to that subject, too. Another thing is, I'm on the street commission. Yes, we spent $8 million last year on roads. You know how many roads we actually fixed? We only fixed 12 miles. That's not very good. So we need to look into what's going on with our street tax money also. I'm there, but we have our hands tied, we can only talk so much, and they won't let us, because they already slapped our hands, two of us, when we're there talking about it. Thank you.
Next is John Welchert. John, please state your name and your address, please. And John, if I may ask you, if I can write it in here, you didn't include a topic, so can I include the topic you intended to speak on?
I'm going to talk about the Gihaw lease option purchase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Welchert. I reside at 473 Northwest Westchester Court in Blue Springs, Missouri. I'm here representing the Lager's retirees. I'm the secretary for that organization. I read over the attached documents that go along with this particular ordinance, brought up a lot of questions and concerns. Let me start with the lease purchase agreement. A description of the land, as shown in Schedule 1, is blank. There's not a legal description listed or attached. I'm not exactly sure what the city is purchasing here. Since that is blank, this particular ordinance may not be valid. Has the city legal department reviewed this? It didn't indicate that they had. There's no written cost estimates for improvements, plans, or specifications presented. There's no estimated financial disclosure settlement statement provided. When you look at the basis lease, which is dated, will be January the 17th, 2024, the term of the base base lease shall commence on January the 17th, 2024, and shall end on November the 1st, 2063. Why is there a 40-year lease provision when the city has a 20-year loan plan? Under the escrow agreement, the lessor, Webster Bank, will deposit $20 million in the project fund at the time of execution. The city gets $20 million from the bank? The setup and annual fees for escrow Asian and UMB Bank are left blank in the escrow agreement, almost like a blank check. In the study session, as presented at the study session, the city negotiated a price of 9.15 million for the purchase. Should there have been an appraisal to determine a fair purchase price, what happens to the other 10-plus million dollars? Also, at the study session, was presented last week, there was mention of a deposit, but no mention as to the dollar amount. I have heard that the deposit is $100,000 and is non-refundable, and the city will lose it if this ordinance is not approved tonight. Who authorized this deposit and where do these funds come from? Is there a lack of transparency regarding these funds? Also presented at the study session was that it's going to need a new roof. They said, well, we hadn't looked at. But however, there was no mention as to the condition or cost of replacement for that roof, and I did not see or hear anything presented at the study session that would lead one to believe that a complete report from a licensed professional engineer regarding the overall condition of the building had been completed. Did the sellers provide a seller's disclosure report for the building and the land? No one wants to be surprised about a building after purchasing it. Is the city purchasing as it's failing as is? Did you do your due diligence? As per the city bond council presentation at the study session, I quote, "This is an unconstitutional debt because it didn't go in front of the populace for a vote," unquote. With all the time the city has had to negotiate this transaction, could they have negotiated it subject to the approval of the voters? The voters have not had sufficient opportunity to express their opinion, ask questions, or express their concerns. What happened to transparency and community engagement? The bottom line, there's a $100,000 non-refundable deposit. It's a loan with no cost estimates or financial disclosures. The city gets $20 million, has an annual debt service of 1.6, and it's unconstitutional debt because it didn't go in front of the populace for a vote. And when it comes down to where does the money come from? In the study session, it was presented that they could rent out the space of the building and generate anywhere from $700,000 to $800,000 per year. Well, there's also a restriction in that lease option. It only allows you to lease out 10% of the square footage. 10% of the square footage is 9,550 square feet, and an average cost per year, per square foot, is 20 bucks. That comes out to about, a little over, you can do the numbers. Anyhow, you're short on money, about $600,000 on that suggestion. You won't generate the money by trying to lease out that property. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next up is Randall Pratt. And Randall, please state your name and address, please.
Happy New Year and thank you for your public service. My name's Randall Pratt. My office address is 214 South Spring Street here in Independence, Missouri. I truly appreciate the good faith, the hard work, and the professional skill that is evident in the current proposal to enter into the lease purchase agreement with Webster Bank for the GHA Office Building. It's well crafted. I read through the agreement. As a corporate lawyer, I think it's a solid document. My comments tonight are not about whether or not the city could enter into that agreement. I think it's been well prepared. City staff has done an excellent job on it. My comments are really about whether or not the city should enter into this agreement. One of my favorite sayings is, is that you should always pursue mission, not chase money. Tonight, it may be an instance where we're chasing money because it may be an excellent value to buy this building, to lease the building, whatever the structure would be. We may be getting a great discount on it. That's for others to opine on. I don't know the answer to that. But this may be a good deal for us in terms of the cost per square foot and the quality of the building itself. But my comments are about this. Are we really pursuing our mission and doing what we should be doing? So my concerns about this proposal are the following. The first one is that we should always be perceived as public servants. In my personal experience with city staff, that is true. They have the best interests of the city at heart and the citizens of this city, and they do an excellent job. But perception is not always the same as reality. The GHA building is one of the best and most prominent buildings in our city. At the intersection, that's our gateway on I-70 to the east, the two best Class A office buildings are the Blue Ridge Bank and Trust Building and the GHA Building. Locating the city offices here, particularly for utility services for which our citizens are dependent and many struggle to pay for the utilities, will create the perception and belief that the citizens are serving the city staff rather than the city staff serving them. Many will assume that they've been taxed too much or are paying too much for the utilities if the city is spending money for one of the very best office buildings in the city. Said another way, the perception would be that the city is driving a new Mercedes while the citizens are driving used Chevys or Fords. We have to be very careful about what is perceived and what is reality, and this will make a bold statement about the status of where the city considers itself. But I think beyond that, it's the wrong location and the wrong building. The GHA Office Building is in the wrong location for city offices. It's not in the civic zone for Independence, which is the historic downtown square area where we are today. We have three courthouses here, beginning from 1827, the Loge Courthouse, and through our history, this has been the seat of city government and city services since the founding of our town. Good urban planning and respect for government requires that governmental functions occur in civic zones. You'll see this in Kansas City. Drive around to other towns, there's a clear area where city government exercises its authority and functions. But the GHA Office Building is located in a regional entertainment, retail, and dining zone. It really doesn't belong there for its use. Some in the older areas of western Independence will believe that we are abandoning their needs in favor of newer and better areas of Independence in the southwestern edge, southeastern edge of the city. The architecture of the GHA Building does not express the power, the authority, the status, the respect that we should have for government. Good governmental buildings require more than glass windows to gain public respect and confidence. So Thomas Jefferson wrote in the Declaration of Independence that governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers
You have one minute, sir.
from the consent of the governed. The perceptions of our citizens ultimately provide the foundation for this consent. And this proposal is problematic in terms of shaping those perceptions. We could do this, but should we? And I'll also call it your attention to one provision also raised by another speaker, so I won't dwell on it, but if our business plan is to sublet the space, we can only sublet 10%. Thank you.
Next up is Nick Huff. Please state your name and your address, please.
Nick Huff, 16709 East George Franklin Drive. I wish to speak about the upcoming proposal to use the IPL money to buy the landmark Office Building, or commonly known as the GHA Building, on the very far east side of the Independence across from Menards. The council idea has not been discussed with the taxpayer citizens in depth, so we demand to know the particulars on the flip buildings game. So there are many questions regarding this proposal, such as exactly where the money's coming from, which we all know is coming from the excess IPL funds, which is a fraction of the charter. Next is what's going to happen to the other two buildings. The city council will use the GHA Building for the new utility office, operations center, and city government offices. The Independence Police Department will move to the present operations building at 291 and 23rd Street, which will leave two vacant buildings on the square. We have a habit of selling owned buildings for a dollar, or maybe we can give them to the school board. How are we going to pay for the much needed remodeling and upkeep of the new building when we say we can't afford to keep the buildings we have? This makes no sense. The GHA Building is an aging building and is reported needing a new roof and other remodeling. Is this in the purchase agreement? What happened to citizens voting for such important issues? Citizens' inputs in groups such as the PUAB are being ignored. The PUAB put a letter out that they are 100% against using IPL funds for this building. And is this being a purchase or is this just a lease to own? Not to mention the inconvenience of where the building is being purchased. Citizens are not happy. They are continuously being ignored. You need to hear the concerns of the hard-working residents and work together to create a more open, accountable, and thriving Independence for all. So far, we have not seen this happen. Thanks.
Next up is Ken Love. And please state your name and address, please.
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, 64055. Happy New Year, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Happy New Year to the people, the residents of Independence. Thank y'all, retirees, and everyone that's here tonight. So many people have spoken to our council, our mayor, and our at-large. I hope you're listening. Thank each and every one of y'all for being here to talk tonight. But I'm also here tonight to talk about the GEH, EHA building. I'm sorry, GHA, EHA. We have a problem. This building's 20, a little over 23 years old. There's no seller disclosure. And when I say no seller disclosure, that's exactly what I mean. I have asked certain council people for a copy of this. Nowhere. I've also called real estate agents that are listed at this property for seller disclosures. Still none today. Not even from my own real estate agent that has represented me buying and selling many of properties. Still, no disclosure. With all this being known with no disclosure, City Manager stated last week in a study council meeting, we know this building is in need of a roof. What else does this building need? Does it need lights? Does it need on and off switches? Does it need plate covers? This property is deemed reliable, but not guaranteed. I'm going to say it again. Reliable, but not guaranteed. With that information, as an investor, we, the residents, would want to be asking for a $20 million to buy this property? Is this property another fixer-upper? What else is this? Will the bank of Webster, I think Webster Bank is out of state, will Webster Bank be required to purchase a City of Independence business license due to the fact we, as the city, will be renting this building? Well, you won't be purchasing. Wait a minute, that purchase price that is listed, I'm sure each and every one of the council have seen this, 10 million, 500,000. But we're after 220 million dollars. But back to what I was saying, is this bank going to be required to purchase a rental-ready business license due to the fact we are leasing the building? And anybody around here, landlords, leasing the building, leasing to buy, lease or purchase, however you want to word it, or renting, it's called collecting money. The owners must have a business license. How do I know that? Because I am that investor. I do have rental property. I do have a business license. I do have my properties checked per city code. In this situation, the city will get off real easy on the rental property inspection due to it being a business, and the only person to be required to come in is the Independence Fire Department. Is it fair to other landlords that pay to have their properties inspected?
You have one minute, sir.
but not the City of Independence? Again, this will be a business license. This will be mandates. Who's the boss and who's not? Again, most important, is this another fixer-upper? Thank you.
Thank you.[1518.82][1518.82](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Marla Kimzy. I live at 25605 Southwest Wyatt Road in Blue Springs, Missouri. Good evening, citizens and taxpayers, city manager and staff, the mayor, and the city council. I am speaking in regards to ordinance 23-121, currently titled as a lease purchase agreement. I am asking you to listen to some relevant details of this proposed transaction before you vote. Number one, as far as the history of the GHA Building, it was originally built, yes, in 2001. It's 23 years old and has previously been vacant more than once for longer periods of time. It has not been mentioned in presentations, but GHA bought this building in June 2013 for 5.6 million dollars. 5.6 million dollars. Why is the city paying over $9 million for a building and up to another 11 million to renovate a building no one else wants? No one else wants. Office space is and will continue to be a fire sale. I cannot believe that your best plan for putting the cart before the horse and staging these moves before you pass a gold bond will cost the taxpayers at minimum $32 million, which includes the interest on said loan. Commercial lease purchase agreements also carry huge degrees of risk. And I was glad to hear the guy mention that he thought the contract was well-written. As far as city charter, charter issues, Article 10, indebtedness, bonds and notes, and Article 11, public improvements, special assessments, and condemnation of the Charter of Independence, speak to indebtedness for city improvements and building purchases. These chapters do not envision a direct loan from a financial institution for these purposes. In fact, the concept in these chapters concerning indebtedness specifically requires a vote of the citizens, who in the final analysis are the ones on the hook for the loans. I submit the charter does not allow bank loan indebtedness without a vote of the people to purchase buildings to be paid for out of the general fund. This $32 million bank loan is a de facto general debt obligation shouldered by the tangible property owners of Independence. If it looks like a general bond and acts like a general obligation bond, it must be a general obligation bond. Passage of this $32 million bank loan at a higher rate of interest than a bond for a building lease/purchase would violate the spirit of the charter, if not the express language of the charter. The Public Utilities Advisory Board held a meeting on 12/21/23. At that meeting, they were going to request by letter a meeting to take place before this ordinance was voted on and to be reviewed by the PUAB. And they were going to present a letter. Don't know if they did or not, but if they did, why haven't they been consulted on this plan? The ordinance that you talked about on the 18th, in the citizens' update emails, didn't even mention, it mentioned other things that took place at your council meeting that night, but said absolutely nothing about this lease purchase agreement. Nothing. So the citizens weren't even informed then. If you want to believe this ordinance has been transparent, then you must also believe that the cost is really none of our business. While you readily allude to dates when you presented ideas and planning in September and November, you failed to produce any real detail on costs for your next proposed get-ready activity until December 18th. Looks like you also paid a non-refundable fee of $100,000 and then tried to convince us this should not be a surprise. Finally, and I- Finally, and I, it is very offensive for me to have policemen and facilities pushed down our throats as a guilt tactic to sway a decision. We all care about placement. My husband was a policeman for a very long time. No one is attracted to a job or quits a job because of a building. Their office is their police car. If you really want to improve retention, hire racecar drivers to run it from one call to another so they can focus on what they're dealing with next instead of how to get there. Put a third person in their car to take notes on what happened and write the reports for them, because they're way too busy. Thanks for your time.
Next up is Lois McDonald. Please state your name and your address, please.
Is the mic on? Okay, thank you. My name is Lois McDonald. I reside at 1811 South Drum Avenue, that's Golden Acres. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here asking you to vote in favor of ordinance 23-121. I really didn't expect to be speaking. On the way over, I made that decision. So I listened with respect to everyone else in the room and appreciate the input. However, I want to remind everybody up there, and I don't think I really have to, that you represent all citizens of this city, those in the room and those that don't have a clue what you're working on tonight. My mom's 91, you know, she doesn't care, really. But I want you to understand, I know the gravity of your decisions. I also know that a lot of work happens when you're not in front of us. That's why we elected you, because we're not the experts. So we chose you to work on our behalf. Most recently, I worked for a campaign on the marijuana, a tax on the marijuana sales in Independence. Actually, it was a collaborative of 30 communities or 30 entities that were voting at the same time. In Independence, our voters understood clearly that that money would be directed, that tax money would be directed toward our police facilities. I'm wearing my button proudly tonight and have a handful in my purse if anybody wants one. So we've also heard repeatedly that that is part of the repayment plan. So I knew it from when we were promoting the tax. It's been reiterated at several presentations since. A perpetual tax already exists to address issues in our fire department. I believe it's time for us to move our police staff out of mold, out of sewage, out of working conditions that none of us would like to spend our time in. I understand that our, we've already made lots of changes in our police department as things evolve, and policing has changed. We need to get used to that word, "change." We're not going anywhere if we can't move this history, this great history in our community of forward movement. That's our clue, forward movement. So let's continue that forward movement. It's our responsibility. A GO bond can provide fantastic police headquarters with all the bells and whistles for $200,000 or maybe a little bit less. We've heard the price go up, but we wouldn't be able to do as much as this bargain in front of us allows us to do going forward for a GO bond. I'm not sure we can fund, I don't know that we can convince people to vote in favor of a GO bond for a police facility, although this is a community that loves our police. I think people, in order to ask for them to invest in their community, they want to see something a little closer to home. So with this deal in front of you today, that allows us to build a police headquarters that is effective and efficient and a good place to work and serve our citizens, and build sidewalks to schools, repair our bridges, make some infrastructure repair on our historical sites, things that people come to this microphone to ask you for help with all the time, all the time.
You have one minute, ma'am.
We can do it all, thank you. We can do it all, we can do more, but it really does require this courageous first step from all of you. And I know there are special interests, which sounds like some kind of an insult, it's really not, that what's in it for me, or us, or my group, or my businesses, or my area of town, but we have you up there making these decisions. We have a city manager who's an expert. We have people in these roles in City Hall that have a lot more experience than the citizens. We're counting on you to do the right thing. Don't be afraid to move our history forward. That's where we started, it's what we're proud of, and it's up to you to carry that now. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good timing, huh?
Next up is Jason White, and Jason, please state your name and your address, please. And also, Mr. White, you didn't fill in the topic. Could you state your topic, please?
The current topic of the GHA building, of course.
Thank you.
Jason White, I live at 1024 South Forest. I appreciate the conversation that's going on here tonight. I'm not sure I'm here with the crowd. I think you should vote in support of it. I'm here because I think we've got a problem. My father did his, spent his career mostly across the street in a police lab over here in the new building. I have recollections of climbing around in that building as a kid before it was finished being built. Probably broke some rules, shocking there. But before they moved in over there, he was in a little red brick building behind that dump, that blue building that they were in for about 100 years, and he was in the basement running a police lab. So they opened the garage door in the summer to make sure there was air conditioning, and that's where they had some microscopes and stuff like that in there. And he was so tickled to move over there. But then, fairly soon, conversation around the dining room table was about the damn roof leaks. Oops, excuse me, shouldn't have said the word "damn." But he did, because there were roof leaks, pretty much from the beginning. And eventually, he said, they got design problems. So before he passed, a few years ago, I took a tour and I wandered by and was talking to Dad and told him about the problems they had, and he said, "Yep, it's about time, we need to get a new police station." So I was proud to work on Proposition P, to make sure we had additional money from a use tax to hire additional police officers. I'm real happy to say, we need to deal with the problem we've got. We've kicked the can down the road too far already, and we have a good real estate deal. Why do I say that? Not because I'm an expert. How do I know it's a good building? I'm not an expert. But thank you, Larry Pratt, he is an expert. And the gentleman who's not encouraging to vote for it told you, you really do have good documentation and a good, an excellent staff that's looked at it. Go back to his testimony. You've got a lot of folks here with a lot of questions, but we already had an expert who doesn't want you to vote for it validate what you're about to buy. The only question on the table then is the mission, and the mission is real simple. You got, you got an office building, a police station, whatever you want to call it, it's a mess. We have an opportunity to move forward. Let me run through some of our other buildings we've wandered through. We used to have a city garage. That was a mess. It was back over here 15, 20-years ago. Strange deal, we ended up trading something with the county. Animal shelter. Any of you in that old rat trap we had of an animal shelter 20-years ago? God, it was terrible. Weird deal, we ended up in a deal with the county owns it, the city owns it, I don't know who owns it, but it's a significant improvement for our animal shelter. Police dispatch, oh my gosh, there's green stuff growing on the walls before they moved it out of the basement. You scraped and you saved and you moved it out there. We knew we were going to eventually build the rest of it out there. Fire stations, we got problems with fire stations. Happy to have voted to make sure we get new. Point is, we don't have that broad encompassing concept of how to deal with our capital needs. Back to Lois's comments about GO bonds, several people have mentioned them. We've got to tackle that. Every other suburb has bonding capacity, every school district has bonding capacity. We've got to deal with that so the next council doesn't have to piecemeal their actions to have capital improvements. Is this a perfect plan? No. Would it have been nice to have talked about it the last six months? Sure, but it's a real estate deal. As soon as everybody knows who the buyer's going to be, the price is going to go up and the problems are. Do you have a good deal? Absolutely. Is it a perfect deal? Absolutely not. But is it a good deal? Yeah. Does it threaten our retirees? Not in the least. Does it threaten our other employees? Not in the least. Excuse me, I was respectful for everybody when they spoke.
Maintain order, please. Maintain order.
The point is, you all supported making sure the retirees were taken care of. You all vote for the contracts to make sure our employees are treated fairly. You're going to take care of our employees that are in the police station that needs to be taken care of now. You're going to continue to take care of the retirees. That's who you are. The fact that there are some people that have questions and they're not as trustful as I am, I accept that. But do your job, follow the leadership that you've got on evaluating that building, and let's take care of the problem we've got and move forward. Thank you.
This brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. We've got a motion to approve the reports and recommendations, city manager. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any councilmembers like to pull any items for individual consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Can you please pull 24-700, 24-701?
And I'm just going to repeat it to make sure I've heard you, Councilmember 24-700 and 24-701, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, can you speak up? We can hardly hear you.
Sure. No, great question. Thank you. He's asked for 24-700 to be pulled, and he's asked for 24-701 to be pulled. So thank you for that. Anyone else, other items to be pulled from the agenda? Councilmember Stewart, I'll give you the floor for 24-700, and then we'll talk about 24-701. Let's do the vote on the consent agenda first. We've got a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion on that, or any other further items to be pulled? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, 6 to 0. That brings us to 24-700. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a minor amendment to this in Section 3, where it says after January the 1st, 2024. I want to change that to January the 2nd, 2024.
I'll repeat it for him. If I'm hearing you correctly, Councilmember Stewart, you wanted to amend the document to state today's date and not yesterday's date, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Stewart, any further discussion on the item?
No, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on item 24-700? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item 24-700 passes 6 in favor, 0 opposed. That was the amendment, you're right. Thank you very much. We've got the amendment on there. Any further discussion on the main item?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
There's a motion to approve 24-700. Councilmember, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir, that'd be fine, thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor for 24-700. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the main item, 24-700.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-700, as amended, passes 6 in favor, 0 opposed. That brings us to 24-701. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
So this is a council rules and procedures update. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. In portion 5.2, it gives the order of study sessions. It says, "Presentations, staff reports, council-sponsored items, citizens' requests." Is that the amendment that's being made that'll go in that order?
Yeah, I'm bringing up what you're looking at. Yeah. So if you look at, there's two attachments, council rules and procedure revised. That was the one that was in front of you at, it would have been the study session.
November.
Say what?
November.
November something. And at that point in time, there was a discussion about changing the order, and so if you look at the, and Councilmember Fears was open to that, and so if you look at the actual resolution, it has the revised order in it. So that, that document was still attached, because that's been the document that you all have seen before, but if you look at the, the actual resolution has the final language, and so it's got 5.2 order of business, and it puts what I believe to be the order that was discussed and agreed upon at the study session.
And that would be the citizens' requests first, is that?
It has citizen requests after, it goes council-sponsored items, citizen requests only on council-sponsored items, presentations, staff reports, adjournment.
So we would do the council-sponsored items before? Okay, I think I'd be all right with that. Okay, I don't have anything else, Mayor. I'll move for approval.
Okay. There is a motion to approve 24-701. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion to approve, a motion and a second to approve 24-701. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the item is approved, 24-701 is approved, 6 in favor, 0 opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk, could you please read 24-702?
24-702, a resolution expressing the city council's support for providing certain radio access to the Independence School District.
Thank you. Anyone, discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To address the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just for people's understanding, can you just give a very short encapsulation of the reason we're requesting this resolution?
I would be glad to. Throughout the region here in Kansas City, there are different agencies that are known as prime sites that host public safety, radio, communications technology. Independence is one of those. If you look at our current police station, the large tower on top of that, that is one of the prime site hosts for a large portion of Eastern Jackson County. So there are police and fire and ambulatory services from across the area that subscribe to our tower. They pay a fee and have access to help administer their department's radio communication needs. Some of that technology has recently changed, specifically around what's known as encrypted channels. So encrypted channels are where police, fire, ambulance services are talking to one another. That would be different than, say, public agencies that, you know, anybody could pick that up on a radio frequency that's accessible to the public. Recently, the regional entity that governs these operations set forth new policy, as is their purview to do, that said only public safety agencies defined as police, fire, and ambulance. and ambulatory services are allowed to access those encrypted channels. The Independence School District, prior to that change, had the capacity and capability to listen in on those, what are now known as encrypted channels, so that if there were a safety issue at or near one of their schools, they would be able to have advanced notification of that and make decisions that they deemed to be in the best interest of the students and staff at those facilities. With this new policy, it's out of our hands. This regional authority has made the decision that the district would no longer be able to access that because they're not deemed to be a public safety agency. So this resolution would convey the city's support for that change in policy, such that the district would be able to once again access that. I suppose you could liken it to, this is the city council throwing their challenge flag and asking that regional authority to review the policy they set and maybe better understand how Independence has historically operated and the relationship we have with our district and our public safety entities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just a question. So with passage of this, it would be appropriate for any of us that want to, to go before that body and, you know, share this with them, you know, and our goal and hope for and desire to keep our kids safe here in Independence. Would that be correct?
That would be my understanding, yes. With the recent adoption of the council rules of behavior, norms of behavior, you were asked to get some authorization if you wanted to make public statements as a body, and that is exactly what this does. So not only would this allow us to send that resolution forward to that regional authority, but it would allow any interested members of the body to reach out personally or corporately to that entity and express your support for revisiting that policy.
Okay. Well, if you could find out when the next meeting is, I'd like to go and do that, and I'd invite any of my colleagues to go with me that would like to do so.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else further discussion? I wanna echo Councilmember Fears' comments on this. I just think it's, I don't wanna ever call out another agency when they've done their work and their due diligence, but I would like them to expand their viewpoint. And the worst-case scenario here, and I'm, Mr. City Manager and councilmembers, if I'm going in too much detail, please stop me, but just for probably 30 seconds. Worst-case scenario, if the school was not aware of an emergency within the area, this would put our children at risk. And I don't wanna be in a position where I serve on this council and we didn't take action to protect our children in our schools. And we want the public safety officers of the school district to be aware of what's going on ASAP. And so that's why this, that's why this item is in front of us, and that's why it's in front of you. And we wanna make sure that we take action to protect our students at schools, and that's why, I know there'll be a number of us that go down there and ask for ours to reconsider this, so that we in fact can move forward in a positive, productive way, solving problems collectively together. But I just think this is incredibly important, so I'll be voting yes on this item. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-1, excuse me, on 24-702.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 24-702 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 23-118. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-118, second reading, an ordinance approving a final plat for the Hub Shopping Center in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Mr. City Manager, just for the sake of those watching, just kind of a brief, very short overview of this, so that people are aware of what's going on here.
This is the shopping center located at 23rd and 291, known as the Hub Shopping Center, but many would likely recognize it as having the Price Chopper property, as well as other facilities, both outbuildings and the strip mall there. Earlier in '23, the council approved redevelopment plan there to help the project team there spur redevelopment of that site, modernize many of the facilities in order to give that new life for the next generation. This is the final plat that reflects the development of that property.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23-118 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 23-119. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-119, second reading, an ordinance amending section 13.01.005 of the city code pertaining to park restroom security and loitering on park property. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Please proceed.
I've been working with a fantastic group of agencies and committed citizens to try to come up with better answers for the folks who are currently living either in tents or in the woods. I know that this comes up because we've been having some issues in our parks with people sleeping on sidewalks or on picnic tables. Can you just elaborate, Mr. City Manager, on the issue that you're trying to address with this?
I would be glad to. As you mentioned, unfortunately, there are members of our community who find where they can spend the night. Sometimes that ends up being restroom facilities in our city parks. The challenge that we've been experiencing with that is that very early in the mornings, our park staff will show up onsite at the city parks, go into the restrooms to empty the trash, make sure the facilities are clean and ready to go for that day, and encounter somebody who has opted to sleep in the facility that night, to get out of the elements, whatever the reasoning may be. Unfortunately, at times and all too often, those encounters are aggressive. You know, people are surprised, you know, they're being awoken from asleep or whatever circumstance they may face, and it has put some of our staff in harm's way when they encounter that. So this is just intended to discourage that behavior, put into code what is not there now in an effort to redirect that behavior, hopefully towards something that's at least an emergency situation, and hopefully more towards permanent housing.
There are fewer places for people to be able to access public restrooms, and nobody has the option not to go to the bathroom.
Right.
So for us to at least think about porta-potties perhaps in a few locations so people can still have a dignified place to go to the bathroom, I don't want them sleeping in our restroom facilities. We don't want them broken or injured, and we sure wanna keep our staff safe, but being sure we kind of think about, I don't want my kids going to the park and seeing somebody pooping in the woods either. So just trying to figure out a balance of that. But otherwise, I'll plan to vote yes for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 23-119 passes six in favor and zero opposed. That brings us to 23-120. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-120, second reading, an ordinance amending section five of the city code to create a new article 21 pertaining to feeding operations on park property. This item addresses item 3.1. K in the 2023-2024 Independence Action Plan. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
To inquire.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, my understanding is there are some parks, the ones that I know of are primarily on the borders of Independence, so actually in Kansas City, but your intent is that for folks who go out and feed in these parks that they have to clean them after themselves and make sure that the park remains ready for anybody else to come. Is that the intent of this ordinance?
That is absolutely the intent of this ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on this item? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 23-120 passes six in favor and zero opposed. And that brings us to 23-121. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-121, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city of Independence, Missouri to enter into a lease purchase transaction and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second reading.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please proceed.
All right, I'll go first.
Okay.
I just wanna thank all the people who came to be engaged in this conversation this evening, our Independence residents, our many out-of-town guests who came to speak. I spent a lot of time trying to understand and consider this request. My goals going into my assessment were, is it financially reasonable? Does it address big cities that affect the city? Does it solve an issue or just patch it up for the next council? Does it advance our strategic goals? So with that, I've looked at the financials, and I'm gonna ask, Mr. City Manager, if you could clarify a few items for me?
Sure.
Could you please clarify what the $20 million that is being borrowed is actually for?
The purchase price of the building, $9.15 million. An estimated tenant improvement allowance of $8.6 million. Furniture fixture and equipment of roughly $500,000. Design services, again, roughly about $500,000. Demolition costs associated with the police station building that would be vacated, $300,000. Relocation costs of $200,000. Roof replacement of $600,000. Acquisition and installation of a generator at the Gihaw site of $500,000. Fiber construction at Gihaw of $250,000. An IT infrastructure, $450,000. A contingency and/or inflation reserve fund of $1.056 million. And then the issuance cost of approximately $125,000.
What would the cost of building, that building with its current tenant finish and furniture fixture and equipment, the FFE, be if we had to do that starting at ground zero?
We have spoken to commercial real estate brokers, as well as design and engineering firms, and asked that question, and they have quoted a price of $40 million for new construction of a replica building.
Okay. You know, the question is, you're buying a building that's 20 years old, that the last tenant made substantial improvements on, and concerns about what we have done for examining the current status of that building. Can you just talk me through that piece?
We have had several different inspections completed. These include a Phase One environmental assessment, a structural inspection, a mechanical inspection, and a plumbing inspection. The deficiency that was found was the roof, the roof is not, I wanna be careful with that term deficient. It's not leaking today, but it's got a useful life of about 10 to 15 years left. And our thought process is, rather than disrupt operations in a decade or decade and a half, go ahead and do that now before folks move into that building, so we're not disrupting operations, and also leveraging a cheaper cost today than whatever that might be a decade or 15 years from now.
So when you reach the useful, end of the useful life of a roof, you begin to see patching needs and leaks, et cetera, which should probably happen within the next five years with the, have to replace in 10 years?
Correct.
Okay. And so the $20 million is for the purchase of the building, the replacement of the roof proactively, hardening the building for safety purposes, because we're gonna have government employees in there, addition of a generator, because that building can't go down.
Right.
Our staff needs to be able to have consistent electricity.
Right.
And some IT upgrades, 'cause it's IT-intensive.
Correct.
Okay. So looking at the financing of this building, you know, in this current interest climate, 5.18's actually a pretty good rate for borrowing money. Webster Bank has a good reputation. Gilmore Bell, who is our bond counsel advisors, are hands-down the best in the area for doing this kind of work. The concern that has been brought up, which is a very, I think, important consideration, is what is the impact on the general fund? I have listened for the last six years to the presentation on the budget, and the conversation has always been twofold. One, we've got general fund challenges, which I appreciate that you have worked hard to improve. Our savings fund is better, the number of tips we have has gone down, so making the progress on a more stable budget and working on the income side. But you have also, at every single one of those presentations, talked about the fact that we had this long history of deferred maintenance on these buildings, that we are holding them together, often with patches, that while, yes, you're investing and remodeling to make them functional, they aren't doing anything to improve the basic structure of that building. We've reached the point with some of these that they are defunct buildings, that you can put more Band-Aids on them, but they are not fixable, as the roof at the police station has shown us. When we approved our action plan, this was a huge piece of that action plan, which is we cannot continue to do the easy thing, which is to ask the next council to deal with difficult conversations, figure out how they hold these buildings together, even though they may not be functional for the teams who work in them. When I toured the building, it is a well-designed building. A lot of thought went into that building. They worked hard to maintain it, and you can tell. The carpets look great, the walls look great, there's little areas that need paint, the bathrooms are fantastic. They put a lot of thought into meeting rooms and training spaces and things that we don't necessarily have a lot of access to now. So for me, this meets our long-term investment goal of addressing issues instead of just a patchwork of putting things together with Band-Aids and waiting for the next council to figure that out. And money is always tight in every government, and you have to make decisions. But you have to make decisions not just for this week, but for five years and 10 years and 15 years. And that is, I feel like, the responsibility that was given to me when I was elected to this seat, is to think about how these pieces fit together to solve thorny, hairy, long-term problems. And I admit, this is one piece, to be able to do the next piece, to get us ready for a public safety campus, to free up the dollars to be able to address long-term investments. When I knocked on doors, people wanted those unoccupied buildings put to good use. That was a universal theme that I heard when I knocked doors. You've got buildings that people aren't in, how does the city put those to better use? They want a fiscally responsible administration of city funds, which, being able to repurpose a building that has really got good, sound, structural integrity is one of those, cheaper than the actual building of a de novo space. And they want long-term approaches to our city's challenges. So I'm gonna vote yes, because for me, it fulfills those requirements of long-term approaches to complex problems. I know there's a lot of folks who think that that's not a good choice. I did. I did homework to be able to make the best choice that I could. And I feel like, for the long-term health of the city, this is one of those choices. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just have a brief statement I'm going to read real quick. So since being on the City Council, I think I've proven time and time again what a huge supporter of law enforcement I've been. I have tremendous respect for anybody that'll go out every day and put on the uniform. This is a lot due to the fact that I personally have had a police officer's license since 2003. And I've spent the last 20 years working full-time, part-time, and reserve status in various agencies. Now, the reason I bring this up, because I just want to make, let you know that I do not take this vote lightly on this matter. I've thought about it a lot, and I want more than anything to get the police department out of that building. However, I do not think this is the right way to do it. If we move forward with this building, they will move into a building that is smaller and even older than the one that they're currently in. Yes, I understand the building has been gone through, it's been remodeled, it's had a lot of work done. But that does not change the fact that the current IUC building was built in, I believe, 1966. We are talking about doing a lease purchase that will ultimately cost the city $32 million. We are doing this in a time where we struggle to find money for essential services? And a time where we struggle to find the funds to pay for our retirees' health insurance. Also with the lease purchase, a future city council, if they decided not to, or they just couldn't find the money to budget, they could simply drop out of the lease. We learned that last week. And what kind of situation would that put the city in? And if you think that this can't happen? There's something similar going on with Jackson County right now. The previous Jackson County Legislature bought a building for $8 million that was supposed to be their new administration building? At 1300 Washington. And the current legislature that came in doesn't want anything to do with the building. And they won't even approve the funds to remodel it and get it ready, and they just want to put it back on the market. My preference on this would be go back to the original idea of the GeoBond? Where the only thing we were going to ask for was enough money to do the police department and the Justice Center. The residents of our city have long supported our public safety, and I believe they would do this as well. Somebody sent me an email earlier, and I kind of, I don't know, it was profound to me. And I'm going to read what they said, because I really appreciate it. Lack of trust can lead to challenges to fiscal stability for our city. When taxpayers question our spending decisions, it can worsen budget challenges and amplify existing financial issues. I just, I really liked that, and I agree with it. From what I heard tonight with the citizens' comments, apparently we have not succeeded with getting their trust. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Further discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. If I may, address the City Manager.
You bet, please proceed.
Mr. Walker? Have you heard from anybody in the development community since you've, you know, since our interest has been known in purchasing this building?
I have.
What kind of comments have you gotten or feedback?
I think I could generally sum it up by saying there's enthusiasm and excitement to see what's been relayed to me that Independence is finally playing at the big kids' table.
And, you know, what value do you see in having offices at that location?
The crux of this issue, as I said in the study session, is all about the police department. The issue was initially brought up in the bond. However, when we, you know, waited five years to address this issue, the cost tripled for construction. And those are using estimates now from approximately 2022. So I'm not sure that those haven't even increased more since then. Because those costs went from approximately $37 million to $120 million, this acquisition gives us the ability to defray the overall cost of construction to address the police department's needs? And still allocate the community's resources to address things like streets and bridges and parks and sidewalks and curbs and a plethora of other issues.
Thank you. I, um... You know, specifically and very directly to the retirees that spoke tonight? I know many of you now personally, and some I've known for a very long time. Some of you I used to work out with in the weight room. I remember when the police department was very excited to have bought Bill Moss's home gym when he moved out of the Cliffs. And that was a big deal. We used to, I had the code to the back door, and I parked where you all did? And walked right past dispatch and down the hall and into the weight room. That was '87, '86, '87, '88 timeframe. So I've spent time in that police station, not as much as you have. So when my parents asked me to start coming to council meetings in 19, I believe it was 19? You know, I said, "Sure." And, and this is the result of it, now I'm sitting up here. But it, this is the result of it. I got interested and apparently was bored enough to do some research about the city council and who was on it? What had been going on, and I was single and have no kids, and my dog had died. So... I, uh... My old Boy Scout sense of service kicked in, and then I saw some of those deals that some of you had talked about, like Bass Pro and Missouri City and Rockwood and MCI Hospital? Then I got a little bit angry. And I understand, at some level, why you don't trust the city? And why you wouldn't, and why you shouldn't, and why you can't. And I get that. And it's not going to do me any good to promise you, somebody that you've only known for a few years, most of you? If I promise you that you will still have health insurance, you're not going to believe me? Why would you? But here's what I will tell you. $1 billion over 13 years. That's the North Point deal. No TIF? And no side deals. Nobody's employer? And nobody's getting paid. The Hub Shopping Center? $40 million. We just finally approved it completely tonight. There is a TIF, it's less than $1 million of that, it's no city guarantee. No side deals. Nobody's getting paid, no side deals, no contracts. Cargo Largo? Anybody ever wonder why it took 40 years to get that done? Why do you think Deepak waited 40 years to get that deal done? Anybody figure it's because there's no more corruption tax? His dad started doing business on 40 Highway in the 50s? Selling insurance totaled out cars. That's how they got started, his family got started in that business. $60 million, 400 jobs? No payments, no side deals, no money. So you don't have to trust me or believe me? You don't have to believe that I decided to make it my life, my hobby, my free time? To do what I could in my own way, good, bad, or otherwise? To try to make the town I was born and raised in a little bit better? The proof's in front of you. Because those deals are clean. And they're good. And they're going to help build this city back to what it was when you worked here. Because back then, you were making it good? In spite of all the crap that was going on? Now, this deal is good. And you are going to keep your insurance. And I'm going to vote for it. And I think it's going to pass. And it's going to be good for the city. It's going to be good for our police department. And it's going to be good for us, generally. And you won't believe me, and you may be mad at me, and you may hate me. And if you do, that's fine, and I'm sorry for that. We have got to move forward when we can, and this is a step. And that's why I'm voting for it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have further discussions? Please proceed.
Couple questions for the City Manager?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, I know I've asked you both in meetings and privately lots and lots of questions on this. Couple that have come to light that really I would, would ask at this point? Given what, you know, the earnest money that we have in it and the other expenses that we have laid out? To do our due diligence, to do all the inspections, to, you know, have the bond counsel and the financial advisors and all that do their work to get us to this point in time? Any idea what all that is at this point? What, what would you say that dollar amount comes to?
Yeah, if I, if I can answer that in a, in a two-part answer, the first thing I would say is, as is often typical with transactions of this nature, the city's outlaid a half a percent of the total cost towards this. So $40,000, $45,000 is the amount. I don't have spending authority beyond $50,000. So $45,000 is the amount of the deposit that's non-refundable that, that we've put down on this. The total cost that the city's incurred, and this is reflective, as you said, of, of, you know, the financial advisors, the bond counsel, architects and engineers, real estate brokers, staff time? Is about $285,000 worth of time, either that's been directly paid for or indirectly, a staff time that's been spent working on this project.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. As you know, and we've talked about, you know, one of my concerns is that, and one of my, one of the things we've discussed is this issue of, you know, if we don't fill up the building with city, you know, resources, city, city offices? What would, you know, could we lease out space? And the, and you answered previously, yes, but I know some additional light has come to that relative to this idea that we can only issue, or we can only lease out 10% to for-profit organizations? Is that, is that what I'm understanding roughly? Give, I mean, I know it's maybe more complicated than that, but roughly that, is that, that accurate?
Roughly, yes, and I do want to make it clear that there was no attempt at subterfuge there. I think I spoke for close to an hour last Wednesday, and there's only so much that can be fit into a presentation. So without the granular level detail of that, that was not included. But yes, that is the case, that there is a cap on the amount of private use that can be leased out by a government entity.
And are there some ways that we could, um, address that with the current arrangement that we're talking about? What would, what would you, are there things that you think we could do to, to address that situation? Should we decide to lease out, you know, the top floor or whatever?
Sure. The formula is really a product, again, of leasable space and then how much is tied to the, the lease purchase agreement itself. The more the city puts towards this agreement with cash instead of the, the lease purchase? Then the more flexibility we have to lease to a, a private for-profit user. You know, again, we could lease to a nonprofit, but I, I would probably be snowing you if I told you I thought there was a nonprofit that's going to come in and be a user of that. So what my recommendation would be is if the council wants greater authority to lease to more potential private users? Some sort of direction from the council of telling us to advance cash towards this purchase and draw down less on the lease purchase amount would allow us to do that. And again, it's a complicated formula, but I think our intent would be well-understood from the council of what you're asking us to do.
And the same thing holds true relative to the pad site that is available. If we were to resell that later, then we would need to be able to, in order to be able to do that, we'd need, need to be able to structure that part of the...
We would want to structure that in such a way that we would be able to market and sell that pad site, which, as I mentioned last Wednesday? Has been estimated to command a price of about $1.3 million on the current market.
Mr. Mayor, with that understanding, I'd move to direct staff to explore alternatives prior to closing? To allow more than 10% of the building to be leased to outside for-profit organizations? And to be able to structure the transaction in such a way that we could sell the, that pad site?
Second? There is a motion and a second to direct staff with just what Councilmember Fears has stated. Is there any further discussion on that? And basically, it's directing staff, summarize it, directing staff?
Yeah, to, prior to closing, to allow more than 10%, to structure the transaction to allow more than 10% of the building to be leased to outside for-profit organizations? And to, and to be able to sell that pad site.
Okay.
Question?
Please proceed.
So if you did that, that would require taking cash out of our reserves to pay down the purchase price? Essentially more earnest money? Or down payment? Yes?
That, that is correct. That would, that would require more upfront cash from the five different funds that are involved in the transaction.
And that would require a second vote on that particular structure? So that would have to come back to us for consideration?
Can you restate the question?
So my question is, the documents that you provided to us today have one financing plan. If we look at producing a second financing plan with increased down payment, that would need to come to the council for approval and a vote?
Here, the deputy city manager who's been working on that transaction can speak more clearly to it.
Thank you.
So we would just not reimburse ourselves for a portion of those costs? When we close on the, when we close on the building, the financing, we would just not reimburse ourselves for a portion of that? To allow us the flexibility to lease more of the space to a private entity?
People can't hear you, I'm sorry. If you can go closer to the microphone and speak up, please.
You're going to have to explain that to me again.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, let me restate your question, please.
So my question is... So my question is, if we change the financing documents, what we vote on tonight, I just, I want to be sure that we have a full understanding of the way that's structured before this deal goes through.
So that direction wouldn't change the financing documents at all. That would just change our financing plan in the future. So we can still proceed with Webster Bank. We just may not utilize the full amount that has been authorized through that transaction. We wouldn't reimburse ourselves for the full amount.
So you would not borrow 20 million dollars? Or you would still borrow 20 million dollars? Because the financing document is for 20 million dollars.
We would still take the 20 million dollars, but as we were talking in the meeting last Wednesday, we have to submit receipts for the work that would be done, so the transaction, any tenant improvements that are done. So we would pay cash presumably for some of that work, such that it would change that formula to allow us to lease more space.
I see. So we would technically own more of the building that would be available for, okay?
Does that answer your question, councilmember? Or you still have the floor, so I just want to keep you.
I'm still just pondering the...
How can you own a building that you're leasing?
Mr. Mayor. Please keep order. Please proceed.
I just want to be sure I understand where the communication, both with our constituents and with the council, would be, that we would get a document that would explain that more carefully so that everybody understands what we're doing.
So I think at a later point in time, we'd come back with a couple different scenarios for the, for the council to review that would enable flexibility. There's nothing that happens on January 17th when we close on this that will prevent changes in the future from occurring.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, councilmember? You're welcome. Anyone else? Other further comments, questions?
With the motion?
Right. Thank you.
I actually do have one more clarifying question for Mr. Covert. I just want to be sure that we clarify some confused terms, that general obligation bonds must go to a vote of the people. That is one type of bond.
Yes, ma'am.
But this type of bond is not one that is required to go to a vote. I just want you to clarify on our governing documents, because we issue bonds all the time through our utilities, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am.
And those aren't going to vote. Because they're a particular type of bond. So can you make sure?
There's nothing about this transaction that requires it to go to a vote of the people. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further comments or discussions on the motion? Anyone else have further discussion on the motion? And my question, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Covert, is, I recognize that January 17th is the closing date. I also know that if I don't sign the documents, it doesn't happen. Am I correct on that, Mr. Covert? Or do I have that leniency to not sign it if the provisions that Councilmember Fears is asking for are not made? Could I not sign the document to make sure that those provisions are, in fact, made?
What, the motion that I heard is to direct staff to address this issue.
Right.
It, that doesn't, so regardless of the outcome of that, that would not supersede your separate vote on the actual ordinance.
Okay.
So it, we, it's not, one is not contingent upon the other.
Right. It's a recommendation. It's not, it's not a requirement of the agreement.
It's a direction, right, it's a direction from you all to staff to look into this issue, but it does not.
Change the document.
Change the document. The current document, that's correct.
Okay. And without that direction, I couldn't refuse to sign it if the document was, in fact, agreed upon as well as, as goes, is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussions on the amendment and the recommendation?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's a motion. Please forgive me.
Mr. Mayor, if this was approved, would this open us back up to negotiations? At all?
No.
Can you direct that to staff? And I wouldn't know the answer.
This wouldn't open us back up to negotiations, would it?
It would not.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? Further discussions on the item? Okay. I'm just going to have you, did you write it down to have his comment or what, Mr. Fears, Councilmember Fears, to repeat it so that we're all clear before we vote?
I typed out it for me. I didn't write it downward for word. Suzanne, can you read it word for word? Okay.
I can try.
The clerk's ready to read it if you want to do that.
I adjusted it slightly. Maybe we should let the city clerk do it. Let that...
So if I, if my understanding is correct, you want to know if, or you have made a motion for them to go back and... And look into, um, sorry, I have to go back to where we were on my notes.
I can read it again. So, you know, I moved to direct staff to explore alternatives prior to closing to allow more than ten percent of the building to be leased to outside for-profit organizations and, and structure the purchase so that we can sell the other lot outside of the financing.
Any further discussion? I saw you put your heads together, so I don't know if you had any comments you wanted to say.
Not for me.
No worries. Okay. Very, very good. We've got the motion made again. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion by Councilmember Fears passes five in favor and one opposed. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I have additional comments. So with that, with that motion and the ability to do that, I, you know, make no mistake, this is a big decision. There's nothing easy about this decision. No one up here takes this lightly. And while I can't speak for everyone, I know that I've spent a great deal of time researching, investigating, touring the building, analyzing this potential purchase. We, we as a council started this discussion several months ago before we could make it public. The reason for that is if we had made it public initially, the cost would have gone up immediately, as sellers automatically think the city has plenty of money. It's important to correct, I think, a few statements that were made in the citizen comment portion of tonight's meeting. This is not contingent upon or part of the GO bond proposal. That's a separate action. It may, you know, there may be some interface down the road, but, but this is separate from that. A lease purchase is a commonly used tool by government. I just toured today the new fieldhouse at Fort Osage, which was, to a significant degree, paid for through a lease purchase obligation. We have engineering reports that state that neither the police building nor city hall are repairable. So we can't fix these buildings, unfortunately. Funds are not coming from excess IPL funds, but are going to be paid for proportionally by, by those occupying the facility. I can't speak for my colleagues, but like I say, I toured the building. It's a quality building. It may need a new roof, but any building needs a roof, new roof from time to time. I also want to say that I appreciate the acknowledgement by a couple of our speakers that we have done a lot of work on this and have researched it and spent considerable time doing so. As the city manager will attest, I've had my share of concerns about this potential purchase since the beginning of our discussion about it. We've worked through the majority of those, but I still have concerns that remain. Make no mistake, this is a big decision. Decision, this decision will, if it's passed, will move us down a specific path without all the answers. As I do whenever I have a big decision to make, I put together a matrix of pros and cons to evaluate the importance of each item. My biggest concern with this decision is the timing. I would very much have preferred to be able to wait another three to six months until the master developer team had the opportunity to get much further into their work and analysis. I'm concerned about the cost of the general fund, that's another item, and there are other unknowns with this plan that give me concern. On the other hand, there are a number of positive elements of this plan. Chief among them is that we're able to address concerns of our police department's facility needs, which are significant. With this scenario, we would be able to obtain a building at a fraction of the cost of new construction and create the opportunity to make decisions down the road to finish out a justice campus. This plan includes an actual savings for IPL ratepayers. While perhaps not the most significant factor, but yet one that is important, this plan moves the city forward in a positive direction and gets us off the status quo. To move forward as a city, we have to take positive steps even when not every answer is known. So back to my initial concern about timing. My question is, how much more could we know in a few months? And does that outweigh the cost of waiting because there are significant costs to cancel this deal? And the bigger question is, what might we find out through the work of the master developer that would change our mind? Ultimately, the police headquarters has to move. And we've had a plan in place as to where that should move for several years. The work of the master developer is work related to that space where the police station currently stands, not where it should go. That analysis was done several years ago. This plan provides a way to make that happen at a much reduced cost per square foot than building new construction. You know, when I ran for office, I said I would research to the best of my abilities the decisions I was asked to make. I was elected to do that. My analysis of this plan is that the positives outweigh the negatives. I realize that that decision makes a number of people who I have great respect for unhappy. However, I have confidence in the city manager and his team. I have confidence in this council, and I have confidence in the city as a whole, as we move forward, that we can address the challenges and navigate the unknowns to let this be a catalyst for positive movement and positive change in our city. So I will be supporting this action tonight.
Thank you. And if I might indulge the council members, we're at 8:08. Is it okay if we take a five-minute break just to have a kind of seventh, any stretch? So, but any objections? Are you good? All right, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break, be back at nine, or excuse me, 8:14. 8:14. Thank you for that pause. Am I being heard in the microphone? It's on. There we go. I guess it needed to be turned on again after the break. It decided to go to sleep. But with that being said, we'll resume the meeting tonight. Any further discussion on the item in front of us, which is 23121?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'll go next after the dramatic pause that we had here for this. Seriously, I would like to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight and everyone that... that has been in the conversation, the discussion that we've had, starting last summer, talking about some of the big initiatives and the big work and the plans that we want to do moving forward with this city. So a big thank you to everybody who's a part of that. A big thank you to everyone who's been a part of the discussion here. I've had the opportunity to, to speak with quite a few people. I know my colleagues have as well, constituents, stakeholders, business leaders, PD, command staff, IPL, coalition of bargaining unit members, people who live on the square, people who live around the square, people don't even live in Independence. So it's been, been quite a discussion. And with that, I would say it's been pretty positive. Not everybody's agreed with everything that has been said and ideas that have been presented, but we've all left agreeable. We've all left understanding each other's positions, and I would say everybody has left wanting to move the city forward in one way or the other, which is, has led to this vote here tonight. I would say that my district, the work that I have done, has helped move the city and the district in a very progressive way. I have seen the conditions of the police building, the headquarters, that has had its better moments years ago, and it's probably has its worst moments right now. Our officers deserve better, they do. Our patrol men and women, they deserve better. I went down and spoke to them about that almost four years ago, so I'm committed to But I do have some reservation. I do have some concerns that I believe that the gap of concerns with some of the financing could be shrunk, to back, could be shrunk to some more of a comfortability for me to make a yes vote in this decision. I will not be voting in favor for this piece of the puzzle. There is a multiple number of pieces that must fall in place. This one, I don't have the full complete comfortability yet, but that doesn't mean it won't get there, and I can't work with our city manager and challenge our city manager that we can work to get there. That, I believe, is something that can be done. With this move, brings up other questions that I would like to have answered and worked on and challenged with my colleagues, and that is moving, possibly moving, the rest of City Hall to Western, to Eastern Independence. The city manager and I have talked a little bit about how can we keep a contingent here with possibly community development, health department, innovation center, how can we work to keep that here into a more centralized area of the city, which has been here for years? So that's a challenge that he and I are going to work on, and I will present to my colleagues that we can work on that as well. I think we can get there. The gaps are not that wide. I want people to know that we do listen. We all listen, we've all taken in all kinds of information, testimony if you will, consultations with, with legal, the city manager, command staff. None of us take this decision lightly, but that is decisions that I am making because that is the comfortability that I have, that I will challenge the city manager, that we can do together. I yield back my time.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else have a further discussion, questions? If I can, I take the comments of citizens very, very serious. I'm going to show you each one of these because the reason I'm going to show you those, that I've taken extensive notes, is I'm going to ask the city manager what I consider to be the most significant comments or questions off of this. And it may take a while, and therefore, that's why we took a break. And I indulge the council members to allow the citizens' questions that they asked during the comments to be heard, and so I'm going to do that. Will I ask every question you asked? No. Is my goal to be respectful and to hear, to give you the opportunity to have your question asked? Yes. I've starred the ones that I feel like that were the most important and most critical to discussion, and so I think, this is the hallmark of democracy, is for people to take the opportunity to come to this dais and share their concerns. And so I'm going to go through that. Please forgive me, council members, for doing that, but I think the discussion I heard from our citizens is so important that their questions need to be asked. And so I will, in fact, go in the order that folks talked, and hopefully I do their, their questions, respect, and, and they feel heard by having me state their questions. One of the questions was, we said, no, Mr. City Manager, if I can address you, and, and so now you know, you know, where we're going to go with this.
Yes, sir.
One of the decisions the council made here was, we, you know, turned down $80 million for generation, but yet are making this decision today. I'm not going to put you on the spot to say that, but I will state from my position is, I voted no for that because I didn't think there was sufficient evidence to show that that was going to be a profitable decision for the city. Period. And I will stand by that choice. Will it, in fact, impact maybe the direction of the decisions voters make for me in the future? Yes, it may. Do I stand behind it? Yes. Do I make any apologies? Absolutely none. There was no evidence that that decision was going to help this city move forward in a positive way. So that's one of the questions. For the next speaker, asked a great number of questions, and this speaker mentioned Bass Pro, Rockwood, the farmer's market. I didn't write good notes on the other item they mentioned. Am I upset with all of those? Absolutely. That's why I ran. I wanted to make sure that we do our due diligence and that there's transparency, that you feel heard. I think that's really critically important, and I think what you brought there is important, and I agree with you on all of those decisions. The, I want to ask the city manager, I know it appears as if we had to have an executive session, and that it appears as if we rushed this. Help me understand, from your perspective, why we had to take the steps that we had to take in order to do this transaction, and, and then we'll talk about how it fits into the bigger picture.
So I want to make sure it's, it's known without quoting chapter and verse that under the Missouri open records law and Missouri state statute, there are different reasons the city can close public meetings for different discussions, and one of those are matters of real estate, which the city did, gave the proper notification, took the proper actions to host and hold that executive sessions, plural, related to this matter. The primary reason that was done, and I believe was said this evening, is that when, when the city is a known participant in a transaction, the costs escalate exponentially, and that's just documented history of different transactions. When, when it is known the city is participating, people look at our total budget, which this year was close to $400 million, and without realizing all the different funds and, you know, the limited uses those funds have, they think that they should command a heftier than average price for whatever part of that transaction they want. So in order to maintain discretion and have a fair and equal shot in the negotiation process, it was essential that the city's identity remain anonymous up until the point when the price was negotiated.
Okay, excellent. The next question they made, which I think was a great question, is it's going to cost $40 million over the, or excuse me, $32 million over the entire timeframe? And that is accurate with the assessment, but I wanted, I wanted to have you do a comparison of that. What would it cost for us to issue a GO bond to get the same building at the same price for that? Because right now, we're going to be spending $32 million, but if we did new construction, if we waited and didn't take this action, and we did new construction, how much would it cost us to do the new construction? And then how much would it cost us to actually finance that new destruction, new construction that's going to be, my suspicion is, at inflated rate?
The, the price that has been provided to us by our commercial real estate brokers and designing architectural engineering firms is to build a replica of that building in its current location, et cetera, would be about $40 million, using round numbers. That's construction and probably, you know, furnishing the building, et cetera. What that does not account for would be interest costs on that, so in this case, our interest is 5.18%, so add that on top of that, and then all of the various parties that are involved in these kind of transactions. So that is our bond counsel, that are our financial advisors, those are all of the design, engineering firms, et cetera. So those costs are going to be extremely north of $40 million. That is just, that is the construction cost of the building.
Just using the, the numbers from the person who made these statements, they said it'd be roughly $32 million would be the cost over that timeframe. If we used the same process then, is that the interest or the total cost? And so, Councilmember Fears, being the financial guru that he is, estimates it's going to be around 60, 62 million, rough estimate. So what we're really doing here by doing this transaction is saving folks roughly, you know, another $22 to $23 million by doing this transaction. If we were to wait and do a GO bond and build a building like that, then it'd be $23 million taken out of their pocket to do that transaction. So it'd be a really net loss for citizens if we, if we waited and didn't take action.
There's that side of it, yes, and the other side of that same coin is the police facility issues. By, by building only the portions of the building that would not be occupied by the IUC, we estimate in today's dollars, we're going to be saving $78 million on the overall police justice center master plan.
The next one, the cost of this, of, there's going to be five funds that are going to pay for the rent of this building is the next question. You may have said it earlier, I apologize. Can you restate the, the five funds that are going to be part of this, or am I wrong on the number?
No, that's, that's correct, and if it's okay, I'll, I will mention the estimated costs associated with each fund, and then, Mayor, maybe this is where you were headed, but I'd also like to make a brief comment on the general fund after that.
Please.
The general fund, so this is on the $1.6 million annual debt service, so the costs I am listing would need to be annual debt service payments, assuming the city issues and borrows against the full $20 million. The general fund would be responsible for $528,000. The water fund, $324,800. IPL fund, $192,000. Sewer fund, $139,200. The internal service fund, $416,000. The internal service fund is the city's mechanism for tracking, exactly what that sounds like, all of the costs that are internal to the city. So the city attorney's time spent on various departments, human resources, finance, accounting, payroll, purchasing, all of the functions that exist to support the employees of the city, those are budgeted in and charged against the internal service fund.
Things like HR, things like finance, those kinds of things.
Absolutely, absolutely. The $528,000 on the general fund, right now, the police department is paying, and if it's okay, I'll use round numbers.
Please.
The police department's paying $294,000 a year in utilities and operating expenses in its current facility. Moving into the Independence Utility Center, those costs would be reduced to $132,500, so a difference of about $162,000 savings. Moving into a lead platinum building that's more energy efficient, they are going to save substantially on utility and operating expenses. Over the last eight years, the city has spent $2.56 million out of the general fund on emergency repairs at the police station. Annually averaged, that would be $320,000. So if you deduct the $162,000 utility savings and the $320,000 emergency repair savings, that's about $46,000 a year out of the general fund that needs to be accounted for to make this transaction work.
Okay, but those, and those funds that now that are going to be spending this money, they're roughly spending that now for their current location, right?
The, the utility costs for the Gihaw building are roughly equivalent right now, so water, IPL, and sewer are roughly going to be the same. Internal service fund may see some savings simply because you're not charging as much utilities to the general fund. So I don't want to, you know, overpromise, but I think it's reasonable to expect there'll be no more than what they're paying out of that fund right now.
Okay, thank you. If the cost came back higher, how would we pay for that, was their question?
On the Gihaw renovations?
Right.
You know, that's, that's something that, that does happen from time to time. There's a term in the industry called value engineering, where you have to figure out what you can live with and what you're going to have to give up, or maybe you wanted the top-of-the-line version on one thing, and you have to go a little lower on that in order to make priorities work. So that's what would be introduced, just like we all do in our household budgets, we'd have to make choices about what will fit within the means of what we're borrowing.
So what we're voting on today is the financing portion of the project. We have, in fact, signed an agreement with the company to buy that building, is that correct?
So we have negotiated a purchase agreement.
Okay.
But just like when we all, you know, close on a home, this is the financing portion of that, and then at closing, that's when all of those documents would be executed.
Okay, so we don't have a signed lease agreement at this time?
Negotiated, but not signed because we have not completed the.
And you don't have council approval for the entire process?
That's right.
And we're not going to rehab the entire building, we're just making ramifications for what we need to make it safer for us, and then also for IT considerations that you mentioned earlier.
There are some safety functions that need to be addressed, but there are portions of the building that also need to be made functional for the public. The, the, you know, we need to have a good, welcoming, functional, in-person payment system. There are still people who rely on and count on coming in person to make their utility payments, so altering the ground floor to accommodate and account for that. And then, as you mentioned, Mayor, the roof needs to be addressed, the generator to provide redundant electrical service to the building, and then some of the technology enhancements that have to be made because we are a governmental entity and need to be on our own separate system.
Right, okay. The question was also brought up about bus service. You and I have had this discussion, you know, it's incredibly important to me that we maintain services here sufficient to support people who are required to come here for a bus. I agree with the speaker, I do not want somebody to drive all the way out there to Jackson Drive, or to, or to have to take a bus to the hospital and walk the remainder of the way. So is there a way that we can make sure that we have services here for people that need that to pay their IPL bill, to do those kinds of services that we currently do right here?
I would like to tell you I could hit the nearest bus stop with a football from here, but that might not be true. But across the street from here is the Transit Center hub. If one takes the bus there and walks across Truman Road to the parking lot to Independence City Hall, you can drop off your payment 24 hours a day, seven days a week in our utility box, or if it's between Monday and Friday, 8 to 5 on a non-city hall a day, you can come inside and there's a dedicated utility accountant clerk who will take your payment and give you a receipt here at City Hall.
Okay, so if we made modifications to this build, or if we rebuilt this building, things like that, and it may not be the full City Hall that we have, at least we could provide those services to those folks, that we can address the bus issue?
You know, if and when we get to a conversation on City Hall, yeah, I think that's important to have that conversation and that accommodation, but we're, we're way ahead of ourselves on any City Hall part right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. I've got a few, we're almost halfway through, please forgive me, but these folks ask important questions, I think they need to be addressed. One of the questions was a fair purchase price of nine point, roughly nine point five million for that. That was a no negotiated price. Their asking price was what?
The list price was ten point five million dollars.
And we negotiated it down to nine point five?
Uh, nine, yeah, around nine point one five.
Okay, thank you very much. They also said their talk, the roof would need a replacement, you talked about that earlier and said there's provisions for the funding that we have on that to address that, if I'm correct?
Yes, sir.
The due diligence with regards to the services, I heard you earlier say that there was needs for the inspections, both mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, if I'm correct on that?
As well as structural, the elevator, and then the phase-one environmental.
Okay, and I know the elevators work because we went up and down it last week, we did the personal, I know a number of councilmembers went personally into the building to see We had the question on the ten percent from that individual, so this person asked that using the IPL funds for this was a charter violation. Mr. Kovar, can I bring that question to you and to address that? This person, when they spoke, asked about the fact that, you know, using the excess funds violates the charter. What's your legal opinion?
Using IPL funds for an IPL purpose, which is what a portion of this building would be, is perfectly compliant with the charter.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I overlooked one thing that I think's important to add to. Staff reminded me that we are also going to have accommodations to still collect utility bill payments at the existing IUC, even if it were to become a public safety center.
Okay.
Those functions would still be present at that site.
Very good. A lot of these are repeats of the other ones, so we can go. One person asked about the seller disclosure. I'm not a real estate expert, I'm not familiar with that. Do you know, Mr. Kovar, what they're asking and?
If you mean, has there been a document that has, the seller has provided in terms of what they know about the building?
Yes.
Yes, those documents are a part of this transaction.
Okay, so we could get a copy of those if we asked for them, so?
Currently, until the, until the deal is, is done, those are still closed documents. But eventually, yes, they would be available.
Okay, so that's the question. If they ask for them, it has to, the deal has to be closed for them to do that?
Before it become an open document, correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Will Webster Bank get a business license in the city? I thought that was a good question, I don't know.
I will answer that this way. If they are required to, yes, they will.
Okay.
I am not, as I sit here tonight, familiar with financial institutions and whether or not they're required to have a business license, I confess, but as a, again, somebody who ranks in the top fifteen of the Fed's mid-sized banks, I'm certain that they'll make the accommodations to be compliant with local laws.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, this is being done as the first step to deal with the police needs that we have, and that's really one of the driving forces behind this move, if I'm hearing you correctly.
It is the factor in this conversation.
And in your opinion, and to give you kind of the final statement on this, because I've completed all the questions that I wrote down from folks, why do you see this as a good deal for the city compared to remaining with the status quo?
I'll start that incidentally, this was not the motivating factor, but incidentally, through this relocation, the Independence Power and Light Fund is going to realize a net savings of six million dollars. That, you know, under our charter, expected to run that in a businesslike fashion, the ability to save six million dollars is a huge step towards being as business sensible as we can. But more importantly, as has been said, I think, across the board by many folks tonight, there are a lot of needs in this community from an infrastructure standpoint. This transaction gives us the ability to begin to address our police needs with a high-quality facility that was renovated at the highest standards in two thousand and sixteen. It takes off the board the, in quantifying that, seventy-eight million dollars towards the Police Master Plan campus that's been recommended by the architectural and engineering firms the city has engaged over the years. That seventy-eight.
And if I can just inter, can you restate that? Because you're, I think that's one of the most important aspects of this decision is that number right there.
The, the teams that have studied our police needs and planning out for the next one hundred years, they recommend about a hundred and forty-five thousand square foot campus over the next hundred years, okay? So we may not build all of those components today, but that, use that number as your little touch point. Back in two thousand and eighteen, it was estimated that construction would cost thirty-seven and a half million dollars for that project. Because of the world we live in now, all the factors, the inflationary economy, that is now a one hundred and twenty million dollar project, and that is based on a neighbor to the east in Grain Valley, and a neighbor to the west in Lenexa, that are in the process of building justice centers right now, and their per-square footage costs that they're incurring and realizing as they embark on their projects. Because of the tripling of that cost, we have looked for solutions as a staff to still address the police department's needs while also preserving the city's debt capacity, that if we are able to have a general obligation bond approved, if the council decides to ask the voters for that authority, which we are still, none of those things have been decided, then we are able to preserve that difference, which is roughly seventy-eight million dollars, toward all the other needs, of which we've identified a billion dollars of deferred maintenance in the city. We can't solve that all in one general obligation bond, but if we can preserve and free up seventy-eight million of that, it goes a long way towards dealing with some of the issues in the city that have, as you said earlier, Mayor, long been kicked down the road.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other closing comments before I wrap it up?
This is, this is perhaps self-serving, but because of the responsibilities I have and the staff that I work with, I do want to assure our staff, it was mentioned tonight that perhaps, you know, thirty-two staff would have to be laid off to make this work. Staff layoffs are not necessary to do this. As I've described, the utility funds are in a position to be able to pay their share, and because of the savings we're realizing in the general fund, like I said, we need to come up with about forty-six thousand dollars in next year's budget to be able to accommodate that, of which I'm confident between revenue growth and other savings that we can realize that won't be a particularly large lift for us. So I just want to provide that reassurance for our staff, that their positions, their salaries, their benefits, those things are not on the table to make this transaction work. It's, like I said at the end of the study session, it's particularly because we want to grow our city, to grow our tax base, to grow our salaries and benefits, that we're suggesting we embark on this path.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have a further discussion? And thank you for the indulgence of letting citizens' questions be answered. Anything else? No further discussion. Madam Say clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three, one-twenty-one, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-three, one-twenty-one passes four in favor, two opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam Say clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four, zero, zero, one, first reading, an ordinance declaring two tracts of land here and after designated as twenty-three dash zero, one, and twenty-three dash zero, two, a surplus property, and authorizing the disposition of said property in accordance with Chapter twenty of the city code, first reading. Twenty-four dash zero, zero, two, first reading, an ordinance finding determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements, general utility easements, and right-of-way for the Valley View Parkway Extension Project Number five, one, two, zero, zero, one, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, first reading.
Thank you very much. That brings us to councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say a big thanks to Deputy City Manager Adam Norris. This is his last meeting here, heck of a meeting. So thank you for all the help and work you've provided to the city. A lot of the work that you helped provided to me, moving the first district forward, so you're gonna be missed. I appreciate your expertise and sometimes your little stern is back at me, so good luck to you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Fears?
I would echo those comments regarding Mr. Norris, I wish you the best on your new endeavors and appreciate all you've been able to do to help us here at Independence. And as I mentioned earlier, if you have a chance, go out and see the new fieldhouse at Fort Osage, really, really well done and very, very nice.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
I just wanted to give my appreciation to IPD for the good ride-along I had recently. It's always a good touch point to be able to spend some time with police in the city. I am happy to say we had an extremely quiet day. One guy fell down and hit his head, we had a couple of suspicious cars, but really a very quiet several hours, which I'm sure they're grateful when they have days that are that quiet. I also want to give my appreciation to Deputy City Manager Adam Norris and wish you the very best in your new endeavors. Thank you for caring about your city. We could feel your fierceness when you went to bat on issues, your thoroughness, and you will be missed, and we will be sad for your loss and happy for their gain, so appreciate that very much. And happy twenty twenty-four to everybody here, wishing you a wonderful new year and all of the adventures through the city of Independence to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Hobart?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We got to listen to your comments, Mr. Mayor, along with the governors, the Blue Ridge Boulevard Bridge is open. The ramp to I-70 is not much to my own chagrin, however, it will be someday, I'm sure of And, Adam Norris, I think that's cute that you said fierceness, because that's not what some folks on this side of the room say about Mr. Norris. And some people will miss him and some people won't, I'm sure. When did you start here, Adam?
Two thousand and eighteen, six years. Well, five and a half, yeah, five and some. Well, we will miss you, and I've genuinely enjoyed working with you. I really have, so it's been good getting to know you. And I can tell you, the North Point guys particularly have high praise for you. And that's something, because they've worked with everybody in the country, everybody. So that's a big deal. So it's a good deal, man. Wish you the best of luck. So, all right. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Norris, I do want to send my regards. We will miss you, but I certainly wish you the best, and we hope that you leave here better, because we want to help grow people in the city of Independence, we hope that we've done that, and we hope that your new employer, which I will not name, because they poached you, we will go from there, so. Mr. City Manager also put me down for a ride-along in the future. I am grateful that you reminded me of that, Councilmember McCandless, so thank you for that. Councilmember Hobart, I just have one quick question for you, if I may ask. My bridge comments, people told me I was too long. Would you agree with their assessment?
Yes.
Okay, you don't, you don't need to answer. I will keep that in mind going forward, and thank you very much for that frank discussion. We may have someone who's going to take Adam Norris's spot, giving us information in the future. With that, we also want to wish everyone a happy twenty twenty-four, and with that, Mr. City Manager, any closing comments?
I do want to let the community know that next Monday night study session will feature a report from the City Charter Review Committee. They have done yeoman's work over the last year, making their way through the entire document. They will be presenting their recommendations to the council, which I know will then transition that conversation to a more public-facing, but that's the next milestone, and I certainly think folks will want to tune in for that. There were a couple of important legal wins for the city in the last week that Bear mentioning. One of those was the class-action lawsuit against the city that asserted the city was overcharging its customers for utility service, and also that we weren't following the charter as regarding the utility reserve funds. That case made its way all the way to the Western District Court of Appeals, which ruled in favor of the city, certifying that we were in fact following the charter and were not overcharging our utility customers. This Friday, the judge from Cass County, who has been appointed as the special judge to hear the city's case, will be hearing our suit regarding the tax assessment, twenty-twenty-three tax assessment process against Jackson County. That case had a hearing a few weeks ago in Cass County. The county had moved to have that suit dismissed, and the judge ruled that it was to go forward, so ruled in the city's favor, and the hearing on that will be this Friday, January fifth. And then the last thing, I would be remiss to if I didn't thank my right hand these last five years, Mr. Norris, for his time, probably should have had his own reality show called Dirty Jobs because of the assignments that he drew, and certainly had his own unique way of handling those assignments, but the man is a fierce defender of public service, of the council-manager form of government, and I can tell you dearly loves Independence and is, but for some, you know, personal circumstances, kids getting older, things of that nature, that, you know, he needs to spend more time there, I think, I have his permission to say he's sad to be leaving at the time the city is really jumping forward. So we wish him well, and we will begin the process of figuring out what comes next as organizations do. Mayor, thank you for the time to share those updates.
Thank you. And one other thing I forgot to mention in my comments, I would like a resolution saying that, asking, well, we'll, we'll talk about that, but I'll, we'll have, I want a resolution to address some things, so, but we'll talk about that. I didn't mean to give a teaser on that. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you.